On Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, this meeting of the Hingham Select Board is called to order. I want to note this meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anybody's recording this meeting, please notify me at this time. Seeing none, next item on the, I would know for the record that participated in tonight's meeting are myself, William Ramsey, Chair, Board Member Joseph Fisher, and Board Member Elizabeth Klein. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for those willing and able and face the flag of our nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We have two minutes for consideration this evening. Liz, you ready to proceed?
Yes.
Joe?
I am.
All right, with that, I take a motion.
I move to approve the minutes dated March 28, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm and I as well, the motion carries unanimously, and I would take a second motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated March 30th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I'm and I as well, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of Tapped Beer Truck for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for an office event to be held at DTM Packaging, 150 Recreation Park Drive on Thursday, April 13th, 2023, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. I believe we have Eric Auerbach. Eric, are you there?
Yes. How are you doing today?
I'm doing great. The audio is a little low, we can try to kick it up. Hold on a second. All right, Eric, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Awesome, yes, thank you so much for taking your time. So my name is Eric Auerbach. I live in 70 Apple Boston Lane, Lynn, Mass. 01804.
All right, Eric, welcome. Can you tell us a little about your event?
Absolutely. So yeah, I was speaking on behalf of Tapped Beer Truck. We're a multi-catering company. We've been hired by DTM Packaging for a private employee event for 40 people on the afternoon evening of April 13th from 2:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. The event is single-payer, so DTM has already prepaid, so we won't be actually selling alcohol on-site. We'll be pouring beer and wine only, and our bartenders are tip-certified.
Excellent. And Eric, you mentioned, you said 40 people are anticipated to attend?
That's correct.
Great. Tom, please department review the application, any concerns?
They have, and they have no concerns.
Excellent. Liz, any questions?
Just wanted to confirm, I see the tip certification for Allison Hamilton and Christopher Regal. Is that who will be on-site? Okay, great.
That's correct.
And I think they did a similar event last year? Sounds familiar.
Yeah.
Okay. And I don't believe there are any issues, so I don't have any questions.
Joe, any questions?
I've reviewed the application, I'm satisfied.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? All right, not seeing any, I would take a motion.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for an office event to be held at DTM Packaging, 150 Recreation Park Drive on Thursday, the 13th of April, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm and I as well, the motion carries. All right, Eric, good luck with your event.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate your time, ladies.
Take care. Next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the agreement with Signature Roofing Systems Incorporated for the retrofit of the Library Connector Roof Replacement Project. We have with us this evening Kathy Rowley and Linda Harper Stone to talk a little about the project. So Linda, let me turn it over to you first, and then we'll go to Kathy for any contracting questions.
Sure. So the Library Connector Roof, what part of the building that is, is if you're looking at the library, the old library is on the left side, the Old Town Hall is on the right side, and when it was renovated in 2000, they connected it with that, when you walk in, basically, the main lobby. So the connector roof is actually just that part over the, over the main lobby area. And it's original from 2000, a little leaky, definitely needs to be replaced.
Kathy, anything to add?
Just that we got five bids. We did it on Open Gov, one of the first ones, that we got electronic responses, so that was really successful. And it was an excellent price, $57,000, 524.25. I was just looking at them before I came to the meeting, and the top bid was $198,000. So apparently, they didn't want the bid. But anyway, it's a, I think the appropriation you got approved was $74,000 originally with the, we also hired an engineer.
Yes.
So that's part of it, too, but it still is a really good competitive price.
Great. Is the entire roof going to be replaced, Linda, or is it going to be just a portion of it?
We've actually already replaced the side over the old library, where we did the HVAC a few years ago. Some of you may remember that big project. So that whole side is new roof. The one on the Old Town Hall side was replaced, I think, about 2006 to 2010. It was, I'll have to look at the dates, but somewhere in there. It was almost at the end of life, but it had failed. So the previous director, Dennis Corcoran, was able to actually get it in under warranty and have the whole thing replaced, so it bought us a little time on that one, so.
Great.
That is a good price for a roof, $57,000, yeah. Joe, any questions?
I agree that this looks like a really good price. Do we have experience with the contractor or understand his, what his reputation is?
Yeah, both JR and the engineer who's Building Envelope Analysis highly recommended them, that they both had experience and they checked references, so they've done work apparently for the town before.
Yeah, and I see there's a completion date of May 26th, so that's pretty soon. That's really great.
Yes, he thinks he can do it in about three days. There's going to be a little demolition, so we're going to try to schedule that for Friday when the library's closed, but they think if they have a whole day of demolition, just three days, they should be able to get it all done and signed, sealed, and delivered, so, before the summer season when we get really busy.
And I heard you mention the, the coverage on the prior roof. What is it for this roof?
I haven't seen any of the warranty. Usually, that comes after the job. The roofs tend to, you know, we're putting on an EDPM, which is like a rubber roof.
Right.
When I had the last one done, I believe it's about a 20-year warranty, so you can figure out about 20 years of the life of a roof like that.
Have we, so we haven't seen what the warranty is going to be? That's typically disclosed before the work's done.
Was it part of the?
I didn't see it here, maybe it was here, I just missed it.
I don't recall, you have the, is it, oh, the attachment?
I don't know if it was in the procurement requirements or?
Here's it, yep, so it would be the, you want to take a look since you're familiar with that?
Yep. And I should mention, while you're looking that up, JR, the, pray, the town engineer,
was going to come tonight to help me answer questions. Unfortunately, he was unable to make it, but he did send a statement. I don't know if you've seen this, so I'll just read it off to you, just so you have it. It's from JR, dated April 3rd, recommendation to award contract library roofing. And he says, "The town received five bids to complete the proposed scope of work. The bids were competitive, having less than 10% difference between the two low bids, and the low bid is within budget. The low bidder, Signature Roofing, provided a complete bid and received good references. They completed the SSRECC roofing project and are routinely selected as a vendor for roof repairs by the town. Based on the foregoing, engineering recommends the award of a contract to complete the proposed scope of work at the Hingham Public Library." Did you find the warranty in here?
No, I don't think this was.
So the warranty is discussed on the first page, at the very bottom. It just says of the, of the contract, "In addition to any express warranty," so that's what we don't have, "there's, you know, the implied warranty of merchantability."
I don't, I didn't print out the bid, the actual vendor bid, so I can find that out.
Okay, so I'm assuming that you've reviewed it and it's acceptable?
Yes, as did the engineer.
Okay, great, thank you. No other questions?
Thank you.
Liz, any questions?
Just a quick question. You mentioned in engineering, engineering work as part of this project, has that already happened?
Yes, he was, he, he had done work, I think, at the library before, Steve Healy from Building Envelope Analysis. They're engineers as well as design, so not necessarily all engineering, but they, we hired them first to assess the roof. They had done, I think, a quote earlier for you to, to sort of give them an idea of what to budget.
Yes.
And then they, so we hired him for $5,450 to write the specifications and the actual invitation for bid.
Okay.
And he obviously is, he's going to oversee it, too.
Yes, I was going to say, project management is part of that, so he is going to be watching and making sure everything's done correctly.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
All right. Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Signature Roofing Systems Incorporated for the retrofit of the Library Connector Roof Replacement Project in an amount not to exceed $57,524.25.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm and I as well, the motion carries. All right. Good evening.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion and potential vote regarding the national opioid settlements, TIVA, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart. We have with us this evening Carrie Ryan, who's the town litigation counsel, is going to walk us through this item. So Carrie, good evening.
Good evening. All right, I can walk you through it, I think you have the paperwork there. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you loud and clear.
All right. So basically, the Attorney General's Office for Massachusetts entered into a settlement agreement that it is request, it is requesting that all municipalities join in. And the structure of it, there are two manufacturers, Allergan and TIVA. There are three pharmacies, Walmart, CVS, and Walgreens. All of this is for the opioid, various litigation that has been going on concerning the abuses with opioid, several, you know, misrepresentations and things like that were alleged. The Allergan settlement for the Commonwealth was just over 19 million. The TIVA settlement was just over 32 million. The Walmart settlement was just over 24 million. The CVS settlement was just over 43 million, and the Walgreens settlement was just over 47 million. Those numbers are the numbers that the state would be receiving. The Town of Hingham is calculated, they calculate each municipality, the town's percentage would be just under half of 1%. It's .48287 of a percent. So not 4%, but you know, .4% of a percentage. So on the Allergan settlement, that would mean approximately $94,000 over the course of seven annual payments. For the TIVA settlement, that would be approximately $159,000 over 13 annual payments. The Walmart settlement would be approximately $119,000 over six annual payments. The CVS settlement would be approximately $210,000 over 10 years of payments. And the Walgreens settlement would be approximately $229,000 over 15 years of payments. So as you can tell, the structure of these are, you know, five different structures. All of them are over time, and they range anywhere from six years to 15 years. The total is a good total, it's $813,000, but all of this is, you know, long-term settlement funds. All of this is in addition to the previous settlements that the Attorney General has entered into. So that's the, kind of the financial piece of it. Did you want me to walk through the release part of it?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and do that now, and we can circle back with questions.
All right. So basically, the five settlement agreements are all somewhat different, however, they all pretty much have a similar structure. The, first of all, the, the release that you've been asked to sign is not negotiable, and that's not because we don't have the ability, but it's one of the terms of the settlement, is that none of the settlement agreement terms can be negotiated. As you can imagine, when you've got 50 states, you've got all the subdivisions in each state, one of the goals of the settlement was to make it simple, and so the terms are not negotiable, so it's a yes or no. Next is the release. The release is fairly not, it's fairly standard. What it does is basically that you're releasing all released claims, and then released claims is defined. Released claims basically means all claims, and when you're talking about claims, it's any type of litigation that you could bring as a town concerning the covered conduct. The covered conduct is then defined, and the covered conduct basically says anything that has to do with the product. The product is then defined, and that takes you down to, it's anything basically from these manufacturers and distributors that relates to the opioid crisis. So in effect, what you will be releasing are these five entities for their conduct concerning basically their sales and manufacture of opioid-related products. So that is your release, and it's one that, you know, in connection with this type of litigation, it's the type of release you would expect. So none of this is language that I would tell you raises a big concern at all. The release would be standard, and, you know, as I said, it's a yes/no. I communicated with the Attorney General's Office, and they do strongly recommend that each municipality do enter into this release.
Carrie, how, are there any restrictions on how we would be able to use the money, or is that too speculative at this point to ask about?
Each of the releases has a section, fairly lengthy actually, on proper uses of the product. Yes, the release requires that it be used for particular uses, but the uses are fairly broad. Therefore, you know, almost any type of opioid prevention, care, treatment, education, et cetera. In fact, we've worked with both, both of the assisted town administrators now on the prior settlement agreements to try to figure out which type of uses seem to fit within the, the various uses that are allowed under here, and I believe the town has already come up with a few different things that fit within the, the uses that are allowed. Like I said, they're very broad, but the key is, it, it shouldn't just be dumped into the general fund and then be used for anything. It needs to be used for opioid-related activities, whether that's education, prevention, or treatment.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, I don't see any downside to doing this. Obviously, the increased funds for those specific purposes are certainly in the, in the best interest of our residents, so, but let me see if Joe has any questions or concerns.
Carrie, so thanks, that's a really good summary. So what, what are the implications if the town says no? I assume we don't get the money, but then what else?
Correct. What happens, there's two implications. One is that the Attorney General has a certain amount of, percentage of, of cities and towns that she needs to have participate in order to get the full amount of the funds. And so it's the Attorney General's goal, of course, to get as full participation as possible. If certain amounts of levels of participation are not received, then the amount of funds for the entire Commonwealth go down. Second is if the town were to say no, it would not receive any of these funds. And so that's the primary basis, of course, which is not a surprise.
Right, so I assume then that if we say no, we have not waived our claims, and the town could assert its own claims against any of these defendants?
Several years ago, the town had made the decision basically not to pursue opioid litigation. The Attorney General at that time had recommended cities and towns not to pursue individual claims because there was a fear that it would be very complicated, in effect, to basically pay your lawyers, because the Attorney General was already pursuing claims against the opioid manufacturers and pharmacies and various other parties. So I don't know whether the town would be able to start litigation at this point, it might be able to, but it would be a very expensive proposition, needless to say, to, you know, kind of start that all up at this point, especially given these settlements.
Yeah, no, I'm not recommending that we initiate litigation, I'm just understanding the consequences of a yes versus a no vote by this board. And my understanding is this release has no impact on any claims that individual residents might have against any of these defendants. It's only the town's claims, not the claims, if any, that residents might have.
These are the town's claims, correct?
Yep.
And, and to some extent, it's the Commonwealth's claims, obviously.
Yep, and do we know to what extent other towns of, are participating?
My understanding is that they are. I have not, I don't have a count or anything like that, but we've gone through this now, this is, I believe, the third time these settlement agreements have come up. One was the J&amp;J settlement, you might recall.
Yep.
And the original one was the subdivision agreement with the Commonwealth itself of how it was going to be dividing everything up. My understanding is, is that, I, I believe there was overwhelming participation in all of those settlements, so I would not anticipate this would be any different.
And the point for 8% that you referenced, is that based on a pro-rata share of, based on population, or is it some other criteria?
It's a variety of factors. It's the Commonwealth with the Attorney General's Office, and I believe input from other folks have come up with, it, it's partially population, but partially based on, I believe, some of the experience with opioid overdoses and things like that. They, I'm not sure of all the factors that go into it, but I believe it's a variety of factors went into that percentage, .48287.
Yep, great, no other questions, thank you.
Liz, do you have any questions?
Excellent, thank you, Carrie. Do you see any risks with us opting in at this point?
I really don't. I don't see anything that would be a risk to the town in entering into this agreement and participating in the funds. It, it seems like the Attorney General has done a good job of trying to set this up, and I, I don't see any problem really with the town entering into this.
Okay, great, thank you.
Let me just ask, Carrie, this might not be for you, but for Tom, all right. What is the status of the money related to the previous settlement that we entered into in the fall? I know it's been a couple months now, I just wanted to see where we're at with that.
Sure, I can speak to that. As of this time, we have about $214,000 that has been made available to the town by participating in the previous agreements. Earlier, we, we presented a broad plan for putting those funds to use, and we are looking for town meeting approval through Article 6 to, to put those funds to, to use, and we'll, we'll begin doing that shortly after town meeting. What we expect is that plan we've laid out, which includes bringing on a part-time outreach person, committing funds to, other funds for community outreach, but also setting funds aside for vouchers to get people into treatment or to support what can be either expensive treatment or residential post-treatment activities that we can make a difference for people. And we expect, as we wade into this, we'll get some experience, we'll hone our approach, and that will help us understand how to commit these additional funds. It's important to note that while we're executing the agreements now, the funds will begin coming to us over the course of the summer and fall, but we won't be able to put those additional funds to use without town meeting approval. So for town meeting 2024, we'll come back and essentially be asking town meeting to consider approving us to commit funds under these five new agreements, putting it to work.
So the proposal? Does, so the proposal that's going to go in Article Six, does that need to come back to us for a vote? Cause I don't think we voted on that. Does it come back to us?
No, so you did as part of the regular Board of Health budget.
But the, but the plan of the, the implementation plan?
The implementation plan, you don't.
You don't?
No, that, that's an operational, uh, exercise that I'll undergo with. But I think my intent would be, and, and we could talk about this, but would be to incorporate these funds after next year's appropriation into that plan.
Into the, into that plan?
For, for ongoing years.
And the, and the plan is, you mentioned a couple of different categories, Art. So you, you said, um, prevention, education, and vouch, and the social worker? Is, is, is the plan to split it evenly, a third, a third, a third?
Generally, no. The, the bulk of the funds would be made available for, uh, the voucher component, which is the most expensive. And frankly, with the plan we have in place for the existing funds, we're not rushing into it. We're not assuming we're going to put, we're, we'll be putting it all to use right, right from the get-go. I think that, uh, we're wading into an area that we're, we have a lot to learn about, just like many other, any other community in Massachusetts. And, uh, we want to use the funds, uh, in a way that will have, make an impact and reflect well on, on our efforts for the community.
I mean, I, I would like some input into what the plan is.
Yeah.
At some point, so I, I think you should bring it back to the board and, and say, hey, well, this much is going to go in this, in this category, this category, this category, just so that we can let everybody else know and we can have, and, and unless it's strictly a Board of Health agent decision, I know that we kind of put our Board of Health officer in charge.
Well, we've distributed the full plan. I, I believe you guys have all received it at one, at one point or other, but we can, to the extent it would get augmented or changed, or, you know, the, the, the operations of it need to be altered in any way, of course, we'll absolutely do that together.
I, I don't recall getting briefed on it, but I, I think it'd be good to get to have our input into it.
Sure.
Just to see, you know, where the, obviously, there's a need for a lot of certain issues related to this.
Sure.
But I don't know, maybe, maybe I missed it, anyway. Any other questions?
Yeah, let, let me just follow up on, in terms of timing. So what I heard from Art is that funds will be coming in, but they will not be dispersed until the next town meeting. Are there restrictions or conditions in the settlement that say each year, a certain amount of mon, certain, that the funds that come in that year need to be expended that year? So that if funds are coming in now, are we going to be meeting whatever safe harbor requirements from the settlement agreement for disbursements?
That's not my understanding.
Oh, I'm asking Carrie, our counsel on that.
I, I know that, um, I believe both Art and Michelle have worked with the Attorney General's office and have actually attended a program, and I wonder if the both of them did. And part of that is the municipal finance aspects of this, which is when can you spend the money, how long do you have, and things like that? I'm pretty sure that the question of can the money carry over or whatever from one fiscal year to the other, I think, Joe, that's what you're asking?
Yes.
And I believe the answer to that is yes, that you're fine. I believe that was one of the areas that, um, either Art or Michelle, uh, in the program they attended, uh, the Attorney General went through with them.
Is that your understanding, Art, that it's okay to carry it over from one year to the next?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Is there anything else?
No other questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any members of the public have any questions or comments about this agenda item? All right, seeing that, I would, oh, Kristen, go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't figure out how to raise my hand.
That's okay, just, uh, just you name an address, we know who you are, just name an address.
Uh, Kristen, Route 388 Gardner Street, and I am president and program director of Hingham Cares. My colleague and I had a meeting with Susan Sarni about the, the current funds that are being, um, taken under consideration. And she described that the health department was going to take a three-bucket approach. And I think that's already been described, um, in this meeting. But one thing that she pointed out was that the, the funding that was going to be used toward the outreach coordinator position was to make that position bold, so it would be a full-time position. So I'm curious to know why this new funding would take that same approach if, um, the funds that were going toward that outreach coordinator position have already been allocated to a full-time position?
I, I'm not sure if we were, uh, clear enough about that. The way we've been thinking about putting the funds to, to work and the staffing requirements, uh, I, I think that with the funding available under the existing agreement, we would be able to create a, a fully, a, a single full-time position to address a, a range of needs, including opioid issues in, in Hingham. I think that with the additional funds, we'd have the opportunity to put them to work in, uh, maybe one or both of the other two buckets. Or other, other needs that we find that, uh, would otherwise need attention that we haven't addressed so far.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, I'm curious to know if members of the public will have an opportunity to weigh in on how the funds are going to be allocated. If there'll be a subcommittee of sorts that will be formed?
Well, I, I think, you know, as I said, I, I think I'd like to have a public discussion about it and, and we would solicit some feedback from, from, um, uh, from residents about it. I mean, obviously, it affects, uh, residents in our town and how we can best use that fund, so, um, ultimately, yeah, that's why I kind of brought it up. I'd like, I'd like to eventually have a public meeting on it and discuss it and, you know, at one of our board meetings and solicit some feedback from residents before we make an ultimate decision.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments about this agenda item?
I have one quick question.
If you could just state your name and address for the record?
Yes, this is Libby Claypool, 45 Backriver Road, and I'm also with, um, Hingham Care. And I just had a question, um, so you're talking about pencil meaning to be able to stop the use of the funds? So is the town needing approval then merely, um, earmarking the funds that have come from the state and put to the general fund to then be towards the specific uses that will, will ultimately be determined?
I, Libby, I think you're correct. So I think that the town meeting vote would put the money into our Article Six budget or our general fund, but ultimately, how that, those specific ones would be allocated, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it, uh, at a future meeting and, and, um, get some info from people. But I think you're correct. Art, would you agree with that?
I, Bill, if I can just, I, I think, just as a modification, it does not go into the general fund. It needs to be segregated for specific uses. I think that the settlement agreement would require it, so it is not part of the?
It would be line item, but it would go into Article Six, but it'd be line item for the specific purpose.
Exactly, that's right. Sorry to interrupt, Art, if you had, okay.
Nothing to, Libby, does that, that make sense?
Yeah, so I think just to, just to clarify then, so the town meeting vote then is to, um, earmark the money for the specific purpose with which the town receives it. Then the ultimate bucket is separate from that, that the town needing approval is to be able to make that carve out and, and take that money from the general fund for the purposes intended, correct?
That's correct. And then, uh, under the, under the parameters we discussed tonight with Carrie, we would then decide, okay, how much goes toward which, um, you know, which one of those, um, requirements under law? So what I'm hearing from Carrie is it's prevention, um, treatment, and one or two others. And I think ultimately, we would
Great.
present a plan for how it would go toward those different categories.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks for the question.
Bill, my understanding is that the vote at the upcoming town meeting does not relate to this proposed settlement.
That's right.
It's the prior settlement.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, the Johnson and Johnson.
The Johnson, the J and J, yeah. All right, anyone else? Okay, with that, I would, uh, take a motion.
I move to authorize the Select Board Chair to execute and file the settlement forms on behalf of the Town of Hingham for the National Opioid Settlements with Tiva, Allergen, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart in the form attached here too.
Second.
All of the favorite, Joe.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I'm going to as well, the motion carries. Thank you, Carrie, good seeing you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, all right. All right, next item on the agenda is a discussion and potential vote regarding amendment to grant agreement with Hingham Community Access and Media Incorporated. We have a couple of folks joining us this evening, John Rice, come on up. I think we have, uh, do I see Michelle on the line? Michelle, good evening. And we have, uh, William Solomon as well. Good evening, Bill.
Hi, everyone.
So, um,
Hold on, hold on a second. All right, do, uh, Bill Solomon, are you there? I can, I can see, I can see your name on the screen, but, all right, so.
Bill, can I point out one thing? He's not going to really be involved with the amendment part of it.
Okay.
He'll be involved with the Verizon update.
Oh, fantastic. He's listed here at, at the, um, he's listed on this item, but, okay. All right, John, could you state your name and address for the record and your position down?
Yes, uh, my name is John Rice, um, I live at, uh, 12 Lafayette Avenue in Hingham, and, uh, I'm the vice chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee.
Welcome, thanks. Want to tell us about, about the amendment?
Sure, um, well, as you know, we entered into an agreement with Harbor Media, um, recently, uh, and one of the clauses that we, um, have in the new agreement is an exciting sort of production grant that we're going to be, uh, rolling out, um, as soon as we sort of get this amendment, um, done. Michelle can sort of fill you in a little bit more about what that was. There were some clauses in the, um, agreement that needed to be amended because they wanted some more flexibility, uh, with how they would promote the, uh, the production grant so we can get the, the best proposals in and we could, uh, you know, reach people over the course of the, uh, the five years, um, to, uh, you know, get the best proposals, basically, and, and get the productions going. I mean, I think that, uh, what, what Michelle has told me is that, you know, we're shooting for having the RFP be, uh, out there very shortly. There's a, I think, an attachment in here about what the RFP is, um, and that, uh, we would perhaps be awarding, um, production grants, um, in the summer at, at one point or another, and then, and then follow up with that sort of afterwards, because it took us a little while to get this all sort of meshed out this year, um, you know, even though we signed the agreement, you know, um, seven or eight months ago. So, um, I'll let, uh, I'll let Michelle sort of talk about what the nature of the amendment is that they're, they're seeking that we need to pass on tonight.
All right, Michelle, could you, Michelle, could you state your name and position? Go ahead.
Executive Director of Harbor Media, 40 Riverside Circle, Marshfield, Massachusetts. Thank you all for adding this to the agenda. This is an amendment to our new agreement, which was signed in May of 2022, a five-year service agreement, Harbor Media, um, that's our DVA name, and Hingham Community Access Media, um, is a service provider to the Town of Hingham. So we oversee all of the public education and government programming, just as a little background for anyone listening in tonight. We have a new contract and there was, um, a substantial new part of the contract, and that is to take cable funding that Harbor Media has access to and to offer it up as a five-year grant program to members of the community who live, work, and play, as we say, in the Town of Hingham. These production grants would reimburse folks for their private production, um, creating their own TV videos, any genre, could be comedy, could be nonfiction, fiction, and really encourage the public to produce their own programming. So because this is a rather large, uh, substantial portion of our already restricted cable funding, and by restricted, I mean, um, this is regulated by the federal government that cable funding can only go toward public education and government programming, we're taking that and we're further restricting it, uh, by putting it into a grant program. So once the contract was signed by the Town and Harbor Media this past May, we started filming out this program and wrote the RFP. And we realized that in the implementation, we had some questions that needed further clarification. And we worked with John Copeland, the Town's, uh, council, to create this amendment that, um, just really defines the new grant program in terms of timing, amount of funds that would be, um, up for application for grants each year and roll out. So we're ready to go and we're ready to make this official if the town feels that this is acceptable.
Great, Michelle, thank you. Bill, do you have anything to add?
Bill, that's my bad, he, he was supposed to be on the next agenda.
Okay, then do I have some?
Yeah, he, he was not involved in the, uh, in crafting the agreement.
He listed one of the presenters, I just wanted to know. All right, uh, Liz, do you have any questions?
A couple of questions. I think this is a great idea in terms of expanding the programming, so thank you, everyone that was involved, um, for this creative idea. Michelle, can you just talk a little bit about the RFP process? Will you be managing that, or who's, who's responsible for that?
Yes, so we have a three-person committee. It's one person from Harbor Media, could be an employee or a board member, and in this case, it's going to be me. And then two members of the community, um, we reached out and dealt referrals, uh, ended up with three folks that we recommended to the Cable Advisory Committee and, um, our board, and then two members of the community were selected. So it's a three-person panel. We'll be reviewing grants. Initially, we thought once a year for a grant cycle, uh, but to be honest, we want to be, um, kind of reactive to how many applications we have. If we, this is a new program that's up and running, we don't get as many applications and we don't fulfill our obligation to give out the amount of money that we've approximated we'll be giving out each year, which is approximately $65,000 to $67,000 per year for five years, then we would jump on board another two to three months later and have another grant cycle. We're actually anticipating that for 2023, um, because we would like to open up the application in the beginning to mid-May, have it open for 60 days, uh, make those decisions by this three-person committee, award the grant funds, and then, um, lessons learned from interest and, and promotion of this new program, and then hopefully offer a second grant cycle in the fall, if we don't give out all of our money in this first grant cycle.
Okay, excellent. I thought I saw a November date. Is that part of the grant cycle, or?
That was our, um, our initial thinking, um, that we would have offered it this past fall, and I think we all kind of were very idealistic about this new program. So in the past couple of months, we gathered feedback, um, John Copeland drafted that amendment in November. The Cable Committee took that up at their very next meeting, which was the first of December, and, uh, made a recommendation to the Select Board. And so at this point, we're looking at opening that, um, application, like I said, early to mid-May.
Okay.
Holding it open for 60 days.
Excellent, thank you.
Um, I'd like to just add that, uh, and we needed more time to help promote the, the new program, to get sort of broadcast promos on the air, to get posters, to send emails out, social media, advertising, she has a whole plan for that, which, which will be fantastic. And, uh, we want to reach not just individuals, but community groups as well. So there might be nonprofit community groups that feel that they could partner with other producers to do things that would be of interest to Hingham, uh, you know, residents. And as she said, we're not, we didn't want to limit it in terms of the creativity of what it would be, but I anticipate very much that it'll be, um, nonprofit organizations that will step up and say, you know, we'd love to do a history of this, or a, or a feature on that, and we'll be able to, we, we felt like we could get more creativity on Harbor Media that would really diversify their programming.
Yeah, great, great. And will it be Hingham-specific, or is it more regional?
Yes, it's very targeted to Hingham. We're not really, I mean, we're not limiting the production talent to all be like a, you know, if you were doing a Canadian co-production, everybody had to be Canadian. No, we're not asking that, because there might be a good producer or director who's out of town that could work with that community group, but there has to be strong elements in, in it, and it, and it needs to be of interest to Hingham citizens.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
And I, and I would say that the, the programming needs specific guidelines for existing Harbor Media programming, which needs to be, like for local, you know, Hingham-specific and topics that are, are of interest to our Hingham viewers. Part of the award is that the producer who ends up owning this programming themselves agreed to air the programming on our channels for at least eight weeks. They could always air it longer, but there's a minimum of eight weeks, so it will fit the standards of what you would see on Hingham's local television.
Great.
Yeah, we were very clear to give incentives to producers to be able to produce things that they have a stake in, so that Harbor Media gets a, what they call a window, to, to air it, but that eventually the rights and everything else goes back to the producer so that it's, it's an award, so that they can extend it and it can be maybe seen in other places, other venues, and, and that kind of thing.
Okay, excellent.
Joe, any questions?
Um, just first, following up on Liz's question about, um, focusing on Town of Hingham, so I see that receivables and activity with respect to the Town of Norwell that's excluded from, um, from the reserves that are going to be used for this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And, I mean, it's great, I'm reading about it, um, the production grants used to improve the amount. The production grants used to improve the amount, scope, and quality of your programming. What metrics do you use to measure if you're basically customer satisfaction, that your intent is met, that people are saying, we're actually reading this, not reading, we're actually viewing this, and that this is the type of programming that we want? What's the interaction with the public so that you know that you've actually succeeded in your goals?
I mean, I think that that's a difficult question because it's hard to get the analytics before you produce the programming, you know.
I'm talking about afterwards.
Right, right.
You've done it.
Yeah, I think, I think initially, I think you have a grant program where you have three citizens that are evaluating those proposals and are looking at those proposals and making sure that they cut mustard. They're going to be looking at the quality of the productions that the team has done and that kind of thing. I would hope that they would have a high, you know, a criteria that would be substantial. The program will air on Harbor Media for that window. It will air in their social media accounts. It, you know, probably will air on the anchors and places like that as it's promoted. And it, you know, I think in the future, you know, having, you know, focus groups and things like that that give us feedback so that we can refine the grant program in the future is a good idea. The difficulty with, you know, when you ask something like that with cable access media is like, how do you measure audience? It's almost impossible because of the way that Comcast and Verizon don't give us a descriptor underneath, it's on channel 1072. You know, I've been, as a member of the CAC, trying to get Harbor Media to do as much as they can to promote the new HD channel assignments that we fought so hard for, for so many years, to get that number out there so people really want to, you know, want to make it and also perhaps on their little dial, you know, make a favorite so that, you know, you're not just looking at CNN or Fox News or whatever people watch, you know, that they put that up on high on their dial. Because it'll be, you know, great local programming as we start really ratcheting it up. And I think that, you know, it's going to be important to kind of see what kind of response we get for that. But I think working with community groups is a good thing because I think that the plan that people give on distribution should be a part of it. Like, when I do, because I'm a producer, whenever I produce stuff, I always start with distribution and then think about the production.
Exactly.
Who's my audience and who's going to see it? Because there's no point in really doing it. That doesn't mean that I won't be hitting target audiences. You know, if someone comes to us with a great proposal for senior programming, for instance, we know who that audience is. It's not going to be the kids in here, but it's going to be an important kind of thing to do. So getting together with the community groups and by giving them the ownership of these things, they're going to be able to extend it through their own channels.
I could add to, John, thank you. So I think the question was, you know, how are we measuring our current viewership and what we term as collaboration? So with community cable programming, you guys probably know we don't get like TV viewer metrics because we're non-commercial television. But just more than two years ago, we implemented a video-on-demand system. And if you're familiar with our website, it's a live TV schedule and you can watch any video on demand. So that gives us metrics. We're actually tracking the metrics right now for the town contributed videos leading up to town meeting April 24.
And you'll see great metrics for this board.
When someone watches those videos, we have a metric. The other way that I would view, and we give it over in our monthly reports, is that look at the number of contributed people, local producers and organizations that are contributing their own programming. It's increased tenfold in the past year. And so if people are contributing their programming, that means they're watching it and they see it as, you know, as a valuable place to distribute their videos.
I mean, believe it or not, you guys are one of the highest-rated programs on the channel, you know.
Sixty percent, if you like. I just emailed a large report.
Your stars.
About an hour, sixty percent, sixty to seventy percent is government programming every month. Usually, ten to fifteen percent is education programming, working within public schools, and the remaining balance is public programming. Much of that is contributed, meaning people are creating their own videos and sending them in to air on television.
That's really great.
Yeah, I have to say, since Michelle has taken over, I think the channel has really ratcheted itself up and we're really getting a lot better programming on. The look of the channel's a lot better. We just want to, you know, get the message out that more people should tune in.
Great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Any members of the public have any questions about this agenda item? All right, with that, I would take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to grant agreement with Hingham Community Access and Media Incorporated in the form attached here to and to authorize the town administrator to execute said amendment.
Second. All of us in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I'm going as well, the motion carries. John, appreciate all your great work on the committee. And I agree with John, Michelle, you've done some great work with the channel and appreciate all your efforts there.
Thank you so much. I'll let the team know, they do a great job.
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, John.
Bill, on the next one, Michelle will bail out, but John and Bill will take the next issue.
Okay, great, all right. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of the Cable Renewal License Agreement with Verizon New England Incorporated. So John, are you going to lead this one?
Yeah, so I can just introduce Bill and he can go over the summary that we have right here. I can give you the sort of brass tacks of what it is. As you know, we have two carriers, Comcast and Verizon. Comcast represents a little over sixty percent of our audience subscribers. Verizon, a little under forty percent. Verizon is a company that is trying to get themselves out of the business a little bit or at least making, you know, overtures about that. Our last contract we had with them, they made the same statement and they didn't leave. But this contract, what they really want to do is they want to have a five-year deal, but they want to have a three-year out. And what we've been doing is negotiating the terms of that agreement, trying to protect the citizens in terms of if they do a three-year out, they have to give us plenty of notice to do that. So we put a little bit more teeth into the thing. But essentially, the clauses that are the most important that we negotiate is the money. So the money for the per subscriber count, which he can describe, is pretty consistent, based on 4.85%. The second part of it is capital money and we've been negotiating, Bill has created a number of formulas that he's gone back and forth with their counsel. And so I'll let him take it from here so he can describe what are the things that we want in the contract. We're getting close to signing the deal and bringing it to your attention so we can close the deal and keep the contract going.
Bill, if you could just identify yourself on the record with your name and address?
Sure, thank you. Attorney William Solomon, two Old Tosham Road, New Salem, Massachusetts, the beginning of Western Massachusetts, huh, two. And I've worked with the town on prior cable licenses, both Comcast and Verizon. It's a pleasure to be working again with the town here on the Verizon and then the following Comcast renewal. You know, there's no better community television program than the Commonwealth or one that are, you know, closer and good, but there's none better than in Hingham, representing our work, everyone, committee, John, Dave, and of course, the access folks at Harbor Media, and Michelle. So let me go over, we have the copy of the summary, let me just run through that if I could. John indicated Comcast has additional twenty percent of subscribers, the end of 2022. Verizon had 2,507 subscribers, Comcast 4,171. And actually, that's twenty-one, so that's twenty-two, yes, I apologize. The, as John indicated, Verizon, as long as six years ago, indicated that it saw our future in streaming video or potentially having customers as wireless customers. There was no town ahead of Hingham in understanding that and due to the strength of the committee and folks who were in the financial industry. As John indicated, as a result of that, in the last license Verizon sought, and the town was able to, we're to bring it on a five-year license term. And of course, we're back here with a renewal of that. As he indicated, this license, consistent with every license in the Commonwealth, since the beginning of January 2021, has a three-year renewal out. The difference in Hingham and a few communities, but not most, is that if Verizon were to exercise that, and by no means certain that they will, but if they're looking more for flexibility than they are to get out of the cable business at this point, because they have a good customer base, they're an excellent cable company, and it's, you know, it's challenging to leave a business you're succeeding at. But if they were to exercise that, in Hingham, there is a 270-day notice requirement. Most communities have 180 days. We felt strongly that if Verizon were to exercise that, people need a good amount of leeway, sign, well, are they going to go to the other cable company or what they're going to be doing if people did go to the other cable company as opposed to going with Verizon's newer service, then those folks cannot all be wired up in a very quick period of time. Plus, if the notice came for the fall or the winter, there were people who would be away, who would be necessarily following what was going on. So the committee succeeded and thanks to Verizon for understanding the importance of the issue and the license grant as a 270-day notice. The notice can be given earlier than the 180-day notice, but the key is that it's 270 days that people have a chance to decide what they want to do. Pack access channels, there are currently three standard definition channels and a high-definition channel that will continue, the high-definition channel, pack access, public information through the television was added in the last license. Pack access and those support continues at 4.85% of companies' gross revenues. It's a very strong definition of gross revenue. It's been that way since the very first Verizon license in Hingham. That the definition of gross revenue does not leave it to any party, including Verizon, to be given a letter to determine what part of the bundle, cable, telephone, internet, is cable, rather, has that decided under gap principles, looking at individual prices. That's important because as most people have bundles, it's critically important that no one can game the question of how much of that bundle is cable, because that's the revenue, that's the revenue amount, which the 4.85% annual pay fee counts against. Pay capital, we certainly have agreements of $156,000 that would be paid in three payments and within two years. So critically, all pay capital is paid prior to any exercise of the three-year out by Verizon being effective. That's critically important to the town. We're, it's a final discussion of the dollar amount, but I will say that the dollar amount discussed so far is a very strong dollar amount. And Verizon's paid a material premium to its competitor in exchange for the right to have a three-year out. Towns did not generally agree that they will buy themselves for a longer period than the contract. In this situation, we can be fails inconsistent with other licenses, but stronger here in Hingham, that that three-year out can be provided, one, there's no guarantee of the exercise, and two, as long as those capital payments are made within that three-year period. So I'm having some final discussions tomorrow with Verizon's representative, Paul Train. Paul took the lead and did the last negotiations and is a guy who has great background in community television, working with communities, so he understands the importance, the importance here in Hingham. And it's through Paul that we've been able to get Verizon to understand the needs as expressed by the committee. The pack interconnection cable casting, that we're, as Verizon get that program and they'll continue to connect to equipment home by the town, Harbor Media, at the Hingham Town Hall. As you know, in the last Comcast license, the town had a buyout from Comcast where Comcast paid approximately $60,000, $62,000 to the town to be released from its obligation for pack access video returning system. The town, of course, has built its own fiber network upon which video return occurs, given with other methodologies used by Harbor Media. The pay capital dollars takes into account that additional payment by Comcast. Final discussions will be talking about the final details on that, that the pay capital dollar amount paid by Verizon takes into account from a financial perspective that additional payment by Comcast. Cable service to public buildings, I make it simple, most towns do not have cable service to public buildings by Verizon since the incumbent company here, Comcast, provides it. If the town sought it, Verizon would be required to provide it. That gets affected a little bit by 2019 decision of the FCC, but for our purposes, the important point is that if the town so notifies Verizon, Verizon will provide that service. We go anticipate that. As would your last, to your last license, and actually a license for that, that if Verizon provides the electronic program guide for pack access programming, as you know, we're programming the show on the guide and we can set your recorder up to record it. If Verizon does that anywhere in the Commonwealth, it has to come to Hingham to discuss not only the technical and financial feasibility, but the provision of the electronic program guide here in Hingham. The same is true with the pack access video-on-demand where in the VOD world, certain programs are available on the cable system, not just on the internet, although some use the internet or on the cable system. And again, if Verizon provides that anywhere in the Commonwealth, they have to come to Hingham and discuss providing that here in Hingham. And if they were to provide that, that would be a great moral leverage, a situation for the town to obtain the same thing here. The challenge is that if Verizon is looking at other means of providing video, they're not likely to want to engage in new cable system services. But we don't know that for sure. And again, they're an excellent cable company and they're an addition to all towns including Hingham. We certainly hope they continue to be a cable company in the town of Hingham. If you have to answer any questions, I should say that the license is very strong on its legal provisions and its financial protection of the town and on protection of the public way. Tremendous emphasis in this license on making sure that the town is protected and that not decide to give the system by getting, trying to get advantage for whatever the future may hold. So when I say that you have to answer any questions.
Great, so obviously, this is not on for a vote tonight. So what is the next step, John? Are we going to have to come back?
Yeah, so Bill's going to go back to their counsel, try and put the agreement that we have. We have a Cable Advisory Committee meeting next Tuesday, I believe, where we'll vote on it and then it'll be presented at whatever the next available select board meeting would be for your passage and we can get on to the next five years. As you know, we have a 10-year contract with Comcast, so we're sort of in the first, I don't know, it's three or four years old now or whatever, we won't be negotiating that for a while. I think it's important to sort of, I mean, one of the reasons why I was really adamant about getting more notice for the public. I also felt strongly about a provision which Bill thought was going to be hard to negotiate, which was that Verizon let their customers know when they do it. But if they don't, we do need to do it because I think it's in our best interest if we want to keep cable. in our best interest if we want to keep cable access going, we're going to need to ship those subscribers over to Comcast subscribers, as opposed to getting churn, where they all of a sudden, everybody cord cuts and goes on to some other things. So it's in our best interests, I think, as a town, to be able to have time to be able to do that kind of segue. You need a lot of time to do it, because it's kind of hard for Comcast to just all of a sudden flip the switch and wire everybody to be able to do that. So it's important, I think, for us to be able to do that. I will say that there are some other interesting things happening on the state house level for legislation that Joan Machino is sponsoring, to try and get funding to the towns through streaming services, so that, and there are some states that have done that. So it's maybe an alternative form of financing for cable access. So it's something that, you know, I've talked to Tom about, and it's a lobbying thing at the moment, and it's a bill that's going up. She had a progress report on her latest newsletter, so, you know, we'll see.
Great, thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
Just following up. So if Verizon pulls the plug, you would want to transition to Comcast. What's in the Comcast agreement that would facilitate that transition process? Are there provisions that, you know, basically they have to accept?
Yeah. I mean, there wouldn't be any additional capital, for instance, that they've negotiated that. But for every subscriber, it's four-point-eight-five percent. So whatever they're doing, four-point-eight, it's going to go over to them. So if every one of those two thousand, say there was a churn of, you know, fifteen hundred, at least we would capture that money. And then, and then in the future, when we renegotiate Comcast, because Comcast is sort of committed to the cable business, but you can't be committed to anything in this technology world. You know, it just is, and the town might want to think about that in a long-term way eventually, you know, if they want to keep, if they value cable access that way.
This is like person Fisher, like, and just building what you're saying, that Verizon, if they were to change their paradigm, they wouldn't cease to provide video in Hingham. They wouldn't look to provide it in another way. They would make sure that any provision of video in another way truly was not cable service, because cable service, one, needs a capable license, and Verizon gives credit for that. It could have decided long ago that some pretend that it wasn't cable service, but it decided to take, as it always is the honorable approach, and get a cable license. But so they would continue providing some service, but not cable. I'd also just want to mention briefly, just on time period, that the Comcast license runs out on, in April of two thousand and twenty-eight, and the, I'm sorry, the Comcast license run out in August two thousand and twenty-nine, and the Verizon license would run out in April two thousand and twenty-eight. So the Verizon license would be completed approximately nine months before the Comcast license. But in the cable world, that's almost simultaneous. Also, one great point, that in the current license renewal for Verizon, the pay capital payment is made in two different manners. It's made as a percentage of gross revenue, a half percent of the company's gross revenue is paid every quarter, and a set dollar amount is paid every year. In this renewal, because of the three-year out, the methodology has changed, and the payment is just a set dollar amount. That has some advantages for the town, because as cable changes and people make different decisions, that pay capital dollar amount is set at a particular number where people can make an access, investment-based decision, as opposed to wondering what that percentage will be later on. So that not only is the pay capital paid in approximately two years, but it's a set dollar amount, rather than a combination, a set dollar amount and a percentage of gross revenues.
Got it. Many residents, and I think the country in general, is moving to unplug from cable, and they're going to streaming. How does that impact our strategy in dealing with both Verizon and Comcast?
Well, I mean, this Verizon out is really a reflection of that. They are going to have a streaming, I mean, the way cable works is that, you know, Comcast has to pay ESPN, you know, a dollar twenty-five per sub for their ESPN channels, and Lifetime gets ten cents a sub. And Verizon's saying, we don't want to do that anymore. We want to just be a carrier, and if you want to get into our households, you just give us your stuff, and we'll put it in. You figure out, you sell ads, or whatever. The, I mean, the media landscape is completely changing. If you've got Netflix, and you've got, you know, Prime, and you've got Hulu, and you've got HBO Max, I mean, that's what, where it's going in that sense. So, you know, the people are, if it wasn't for sports, live sports, I think cable would really be in trouble. And how it's affecting the town is that we are getting a certain amount of churn. That's, so we're losing subscribers, but to be honest with you, over the past few years, we've been gaining revenue, they've been gaining revenue by doing more pay-per-view and do more share. And what we're trying to basically say is, look, we want to supplement some of those revenue with maybe some streaming revenue, because they're getting the same access through the pipes that we have. As long as the interface with cable is more convenient for people, and the, and it's, as you know, if you have, say Comcast, I mean, I don't go, like I did a couple of years ago, go on, have to type in Hulu and go on through the internet. I go in through my Comcast remote, so that they're offering those services. And so it remains to be seen whether that convenience is something that people aren't willing to pay for. Now, to what degree, you know, it'll be interesting. I think it's important that we might want to think about ways in which the town can be creative about supplementing the cable access revenue, as they value the programming. And they have to make that kind of evaluation of like, what's it worth to us to have good, vibrant cable local programming? We definitely want to have the select board meetings on, but, you know, do we, how much of the other thing are we willing to pay for? So, I mean, I don't think we're there yet, but long-term, probably need to think about it.
Thank you. No other questions?
Okay.
Liz, do you have any questions?
Just one question about the timing of the payment. I know we're talking about getting all of the revenue in the first three years, even if it's a-
For capital only.
For capital only.
Yeah.
So it's, so I see three payments of fifty-two thousand, but then where does, what is the twenty-three, nine-seventy-five? Can you just?
Bill? Bill? The twenty-three, is that just a different computation that you had?
I mean, I, I think the problem is in the computer, I use a model to do this. Each payment is fifty-two thousand. Thank you, I'll write that in summary.
Okay. So that's the capital-
And that our payment for the four-point-eight-five percent is based on the revenue that they have and that they send to us on a, I think, a quarterly basis, as far as I know. Right, Michelle? You get, you get a quarterly check from Verizon, as well as Comcast, yeah?
Okay. So it's, so it's the capital-
Yeah.
-payments, plus the four-point-eight-five percent?
Right.
And that's also paid in the first three years?
No, that's paid over the course, that's paid over the-
However long the agreement is?
Yeah, yeah, however long the agreement is.
Okay.
That's not front-loaded, as it were.
Okay.
We felt strongly like, hey, we could get the capital, because, I mean, a little bit it was the horse trading, where we basically said, look, you want a three-year out, you got to give us something.
Right, right. Which, which I think is smart. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, it's the fair thing, I think. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything? Anybody have any questions or comments about this agenda item? All right, John, thanks very much for joining us. Bill, take care.
Thank you.
See you on the twentieth.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Have a good evening.
So have we posted for the hearing yet?
We have. In, I don't know, the, there was some talk about, from Sharon and Heidi, was whether or not they were doing it in the, the journal, or the, no, or the ledger.
Ledger.
So I'm not sure where, but it's posted appropriately. It needs to be posted two weeks in advance.
Okay, because we had talked about it being on the eleventh, but it's now the-
It's now the twentieth.
Got it. Okay.
All right. All right. Next item on the agenda is to proclaim April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two as Earth Day in the town of Hingham. Jim, you going to come up and join us? And good to see you again, Jim.
Thank you.
You can send your name and address for the records?
Yes. Jim Hughes, and that's H-U-S-E. I live at fifty Floret Circle at the Meadows. I am chairman of the Hingham Shade Tree Committee.
Okay. Well, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me. Great. This will be very, very brief, and you can actually combine agenda items eight and nine, so that'll even save a little more time. Hingham, as you may know, has been a tree city, USA, for the past thirty-five years. And part of our keeping that designation is by recognizing and celebrating in particular Arbor Day. So we've combined Arbor Day and the Earth Day into one celebration. And this year, that date, so you have it on your calendar, is April twenty-eighth. And what we'll be doing is, we'll be having a ceremony at Teresee Park. Teresee Park is, in case you don't know where that is, it's the corner of Hobart and Cross Street. It's on your way to the transfer station, if you're going that way. And we'll be having a tree planting, and that's the ceremony, which will be a red maple. And I should add that it's not costing the town anything, because the Garden Club of Hingham, each year, donates the tree. The DPW, along with members of the Shade Tree Committee, will be part of that presentation. You obviously are invited, nine-thirty a.m. on the twenty-eighth. And we have a proclamation that we read in celebration. And that proclamation will be read by towns and communities all over the United States. Goes back to the eighteen-eighties with the institution of Arbor Day, or the protection of trees. And so we're very proud in Hingham to be a part of the Tree City, USA. We went through, as you might remember, this, two falls ago, a devastating time with that storm. We lost over two-hundred trees, shade trees, not, not, I'm talking public town shade trees, which was a devastating loss. And you don't replace them all at one time, so we do it over time. So I'm here to invite you, not looking for anything but your presence, if possible, on the twenty-eighth, nine-thirty, for the celebration of Arbor Day.
Excellent.
Well, Jim, thank you for the invitation. I attended last year, it was a wonderful ceremony.
You did.
It was very nice, yeah.
Please have you.
We had the DPW leadership there.
It's rain or shine, by the way.
Well, it's trees, right? So maybe it's better with raining. But so thanks for all your great work on the Shade Tree Committee, Jim. Appreciate it. I know, very passionate, and we appreciate all you do.
Thank you very much.
Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Do we bring our own shovel, or do you provide?
We provide a shiny shovel. But we'll let you use it, and if you're present, you can read the certificate that we have. It's actually drawn up next door in your office. So, again, thank you.
No other questions?
There's any?
No questions. Thank you.
We're going to read, we're going to read a couple proclamations, if you want to hang out for a little bit. Real quick, we're going to read a proclamation to proclaim Earth Day. And what I'm going to do, I broke it up, so I'm going to, Joe, I'm going to have you read the first two.
Yep.
Liz, you'll read the second two.
Okay.
And I'll finish it off. So let's take the Earth Day proclamation first.
Okay. The town of Hingham, Massachusetts, the Earth Day proclamation. Whereas the town of Hingham, as part of the global community, is participating in Earth Day two thousand and twenty-three, and recognizes the environmental challenges faced by all peoples. And whereas it is understood that as citizens of the global community, the town of Hingham must step forward and take action to create positive environmental changes that will support the management and care of our environment. And-
And whereas environmental education, along with awareness, helps the citizens of Hingham develop the concern and skills to address the environmental challenges we face. And whereas, in recognition of today's environmental challenges, trees will be planted as a symbol to our commitment to the good stewardship of all that is entrusted to our care.
Whereas, the town of Hingham pledges to support environmental and educational initiatives in our community that encourage others to undertake similar actions. Now, therefore, we, William C. Ramsey, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Joseph M. Fisher, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, to hereby proclaim Saturday, April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, as Earth Day. Dated this fourth day of April two thousand and twenty-three, signed William C. Ramsey, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Joseph M. Fisher. And with that, I would make a motion to proclaim April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, as Earth Day in the town of Hingham.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye, as well, the motion carries. And the next item on the agenda is to proclaim April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the town of Hingham. And for this one, I'm going to have Liz, you do the first three, whereas. Joe, you do the second, and I'll do the last portion of it.
Let me do the last three.
That's two or three there.
Yep, got it.
Okay. Town of Hingham, Massachusetts Arbor Day proclamation. Whereas, in eighteen-seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife.
And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in Hingham increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, Hingham, Massachusetts, has been recognized as a Tree City, USA, by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree-planting ways.
Now, therefore, we, William C. Ramsey, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Joseph M. Fisher, Select Board of the Town of Hingham, do hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the town of Hingham, and urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, support our town forestry program, to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Dated this fourth day of April two thousand and twenty-three, signed William C. Ramsey, Elizabeth F. Klein, and Joseph M. Fisher. And I would make a motion to proclaim April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Arbor Day in the town of Hingham.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I'm an aye, as well, the motion carries. Jim, thanks very much. Hopefully, we'll see you on the twenty-eighth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda is appointments. I believe we have two appointments for consideration this evening. I'm going to suggest the first appointment. So I would make a motion to appoint Paul Cunin to the Grand Army of the Republic Hall trustees to fill an unexpired term ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an aye, as well, the motion carries.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rachel Swadhani to the Taxation Aid Committee.
Second.
All those in favor, Liz?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
I'm an aye, as well, the motion carries.
Right.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Does anybody have any public comment this evening? Please identify yourself now. Not seeing any. I'd move next to town administrative select board reports, and let's start with ours.
Sure. The only point I would add this evening is just to remind folks in the community that we have an upcoming public information session regarding the FY twenty-four budget and the proposed override. It's set for Tuesday, the eleventh of April, start time seven p.m., and it's by Zoom. And the specific information is available on the town's website. We'll be following up this week with some, with a press release and additional information, just to get that information out into the community.
All right, thank you. Tom?
Two very quick items. One is, I just wanted to clarify a conversation from earlier. The, there is a twenty-year full system warranty and a two-year construction warranty on the work that Kathy was here to present to you earlier.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Second is, I just wanted to highlight for the community that Hingham's new mental health coalition is hosting an event on April twelfth at seven p.m. that will feature a discussion and information related to suicide awareness. Also, State Senator Pat O'Connor will be present to discuss a new mental health resource funded through the state by legislation sponsored by Senator O'Connor. We will also get an update on everything that the coalition has been working on.
Tom, thanks very much. Liz, anything this evening?
A couple things. One, I just wanted to note that we all attended the ABLE training that the police department took, took part in. Our own civil rights officer led the training, and I was glad to be there and see at least part of it, as this active bystandership training for law enforcement really requires a commitment from the leadership in the town-
a commitment from the leadership in the town, so I was glad that we were there to see that, and certainly, I think that's our expectation, so it was nice to be there and encourage that. Also, the Citizens Police Academy kicks off tomorrow evening, so hoping to catch some of that. I had the opportunity to have breakfast with Representative Moschino last week and discuss several of the bills that I know Art and Michelle learned about on the legislative briefing. A couple things that are really relevant for us. One is, there's a potential bill proposing to set up a municipal and public safety building authority, which could be useful for Hingham, certainly looking at some large capital projects like the Senior Center, another fire station, and so forth. Another one, which relates to the meals tax, is something that came out of the Sustainable Budget Task Force report as a recommendation, so that is something we will be following closely. That is certainly a good amount of revenue for the town, so could have a great impact. I also wanted to mention that April is Autism Awareness Month. So just a reminder that citizens can use the Exceptional Needs Registry. It is on the town website. It's also on the link on the police department page under Programs and Services, and that is a form that can be, a confidential form that can be filled out by citizens so that our public safety professionals know ahead of time before responding to a call if there is, if there is a resident with, with special needs. I think that's it for me. It's been a busy week, though.
Busy season.
Oh, and you, actually, you wanted me to talk about the other office hours?
Sure, if you'd like, I'll bring that up.
Okay, great.
Great, thank you.
So in addition to the more formal public information sessions, which are really bigger presentations, we also wanted to continue with office hours and offer office hours on the weekends, since the info sessions have been during the week. So this Saturday, April eighth, I will be conducting a Zoom session with school committee member Ness Corente from eleven to twelve. And then the following Saturday, the fifteenth, we are planning on doing what we're, I don't know if this is the official name, but coffee chats. The idea that we'll be around town, the select board members, as well as school committee members. So to kind of meet people where they are or might already be on a Saturday, certainly come and have a cup of coffee with us, or just ask a quick question on your way, you know, at any of these places, Brewed Awakenings, Dunkin', Atlantic, Starbucks, or Red Eye Roasters. So look forward to seeing everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
So I'm a tea drinker, so I'm hoping that tea will also be available. I had two comments. One, just following up on Liz's discussion about the ABLE training seminar that we attended, I believe that there are only twenty communities in the entire state that are doing it, so it's a real honor and privilege that our Hingham Police Department is going, is doing the work. And second, Liz and I intended the sixtieth anniversary of the Old Colony Montessori School here in Hingham yesterday. It was really a wonderful event, and we wish them success in the next sixty years. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate the Hingham Bay South Shore Regional Emergency Communication Center, also known as the SREC, for receiving this year's Massachusetts Communicators Supervisor Association's Team of the Year Award. This was an award given to the SREC in response to their work regarding the Apple Store incident in November, and the phenomenal response that that team did, given everything going on that day. Can't think of a more deserving department to receive an award of that nature. Want to thank Aaron Smith for his leadership of the SREC and all of the great employees we have down there. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
I'm an ayes, well, the motion carries. Hope everybody has a good evening, and see you next week.